Just to remind you the importance of the subject, I just took two copies from two extracts from the AAAI keynote speakers. First one, Francesca Rossi, who gave a very interesting keynote on some hybrid approaches to AI. So Francesca, she said on the left, all the capabilities of AI, we're able to do a lot of things. But on the right, you see the limitations and ethical issues. So she's reminding everyone that we have questions of robustness, resiliency, of resource efficiency, of causality, of trust, fairness, robustness, etc., again. So it is now very clear for everyone that these questions have to be solved if we want to to apply AI for really, especially on critical systems, or systems which are mission critical, or health critical, or economic critical. So we all know that, but it's just a nice reminder. Similarly, when Michael Littman was giving his keynote on the 100-year study on AI from Stanford, he was showing the remarkable progress of AI on many subjects, of course, we all know that, but also the need to consider downsides, like the risk of automating decisions, of the risk of people being misled, discriminated, harmed, etc. And this also being due to historical data, which can exacerbate biases. So all this is well-known, but it's really a key point for us all, and this is why we have to work on trust issues and on safety issues. When I talk about the limitations of AI, I usually mention what I call the five walls of artificial intelligence, which means that if we don't work against these walls, in order not to hit these walls, we have to, they will be strong enough that we can, that it can, let's say, question the use of AI in society as a whole. So trust is one of the walls, and we will talk about trust a lot, because this is a subject of confiance AI, confiance meaning trust in French. But there's also limitations for energy. AI is using too much energy at the moment. There are questions of security, and safety, of course, is not far from the question of security. Interactions with people, with humans is also a very important subject, and we are not good on that at the moment. And the last wall that I'm talking about, I call it inhumanity, which is a gathering of several things, gathering of the questions of causality, of common sense, and some other factors. So things that we have, we do possess humans, but machines don't. And safety, in fact, is related to many of these subjects. Safety is related to trust, related to security, related to interaction with humans, and related somehow slightly to these humanity questions. This is why we have in France a big initiative for trustworthiness and certification of AI. This is a large program funded by the French government, in fact, where we have three main pillars. We have a technological pillar, which is developing an engineering platform for trustworthiness AI, and this is a subject of confiance AI, that's the upper part. But we also have an application evaluation pillar, and of course, there are links between the technology pillar and the applications evaluation pillar. And we have also a pillar looking at norms and standards, so contributing to the norms and standards and regulation environment towards certification of AI. So this is a global strategy on certification and trustworthiness AI. And as I said, confiance AI is the top part of this strategy. In the confiance AI program, it's a rather large program. At least in France, it's the largest on the subject of trustworthiness AI, but probably also in Europe, with a global budget of 45 million euros for four years. We already passed the first year of the program, now we are in the second year. We are looking, if you look at the bottom of this picture, we are looking at critical sectors like automotive, robotics, defense, energy, manufacturing, which are really the main focus of our program. So as I said again, mission critical, life critical, economic critical applications, industry critical applications. In order to do that, we address a lot of subjects, of engineering subjects, data engineering, knowledge engineering, system engineering, algorithm engineering, safety engineering, of course, but not forgetting human factors. And we are addressing all kinds of AI, not only machine learning, not only data-driven AI, but we are also looking at knowledge-based AI, at hybrid AI, and with a specific focus on embedded AI, because in many critical applications, the AI systems are embedded. So this is the overall focus of the program, we will have much more detail later. The program architecture is composed of seven projects. The four technical projects in the middle, looking at data, looking at the design of AI components, looking at the verification and characterization of AI components, and looking at embedded components. And around these four, let's say, main technical projects, we have the design of a reference of an environment, working on tools, and also we're looking at the use cases that serve to validate what we do. And also, we have some, let's say, more general methodological projects. I'm not detailing now, you will have some presentations later. It's an evolution over time. So last year, we were essentially working on a data-driven AI, looking at time-series data, images, video, with use cases in maintenance, in perception, in quality control. So it's essentially machine learning, statistical learning, machine learning, deep learning, and these kind of things. Since the beginning of these years, we start to address additional domains like text and audio, but also looking at knowledge-based AI in addition to data-driven AI. So this is a new focus for the year 2022, and looking at more various use cases. And after next year, we will look at more generally hybrid AI applications, and finalizing the reference environment and making it available for our industries. Some of the scientific challenges that we work on, it's trustworthiness and systems engineering with AI components, so qualifying these components, building the components, making them embedded. We're looking at the challenges, we have in fact something like 30 or 40 different individual scientific challenges. This is just a broad view of the challenges in three parts. So the second part is linked to data, so trust and learning data, qualifying data and knowledge for learning, building data and knowledge to increase confidence in learning. And we have a third group of challenges linked to trust and human interaction. So trust generating interaction between AI-based systems and their users, but also between AI-based systems and their designers and certifiers, who also need to interact with these systems. Just two examples of use cases, we have now many use cases. One is a fabrication, is an industry application detecting defaults in welding for a low-carbon manufacturer. So this is essentially an image processing use cases, as I said, last year, we were essentially working on perception use cases. And similarly, the second perception use case that I mentioned here is about urban scene interpretation for pedestrian detection and for global environmental identification. But I said, we have now a dozen of use cases which we work. Confiance is a large group, so we have, on the left, you have the the big nine, large industrial companies, who are essentially working with critical systems, and you see that these are big names. And then, in addition to that, we have a group of startups and a group of academics who contribute to the program. So you can see the names. But we are not alone in the world, so we are also collaborating and positioning the confiance AI program within a global environment for trust in AI. So there are initiatives in America, like the AI Knights, or in Canada and France, like the DIL program, which is a dependable, explainable learning. There are initiatives in Germany, like the Certifizier zur Konsulterung von Intelligenz, so certified AI program, and a few other initiatives worldwide. So we are positioning ourselves in this front set of initiatives. For this session, we are going to show several aspects of the program. So the first three talks on measurement of trust, on astronauts' cases, and on data, will lead us to 11:05, and then we will have time for questions. So please put your questions on the chat, and we will deal with these questions at 11:05 after the first three talks. And then we have three other talks on some detailed applications, on the labeling of data sets, on randomized smoothing, and on uncertainty quantification for, let's say, statistical applications. Okay, so this was my introductory talk, and now I leave the floor to... And yes, so I stopped sharing my screen, I leave the floor to Agnès, to tell us about how to measure trust.
Thank you. We tested earlier, I guess it's still fine?
Very fine.
Full screen? Okay, great. So hello, everyone. I'm Agnès Dela Baud, I'm with Eleni, the Laboratory for Metrology and Testing. I'm going to talk about the notion of assessment, measurement of trust. So the main question is, can we measure trust? As we probably know, we hear a lot about trustworthiness of artificial intelligence. So we hear really a lot of things about that. So if we think about, well, what is important in the trustworthiness of artificial intelligence? We hear words like "safety", so an AI that I can trust, it is safe. It is also fair in the treatment, for the behavior that are performed by the AI. We also hear about notions about ethics of AI, explainability. Well, we hear a lot, a lot, a lot of words. So apparently, there are a lot, well, the list goes on, 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 on. Well, we hear many, many words concerning trustability, trustworthiness of AI. We know as well that there are many, many works about trustworthiness. Here is a small, really small excerpt of such works. We can find technical reports, technical guides as well, emanating from different entities worldwide. We can cite, for example, in the middle, technical guide from, or technical report, I don't exactly how to categorize it, from the NIST, so the American Institute, NIST, dealing with trust and artificial intelligence. On the right, we also find works emanating from the European Agency for the Safety of Aviation, well, it's not in the title, but they deal with notions relative to trustworthiness. Seems obvious, we've got a lot of things as well. So emanating from the High Level Expert Group on Artificial Intelligence, they did a lot of work and produced several reports relative to estimating what is a trustworthy system, what is trustworthy AI. We also have the proposition for a regulation of artificial intelligence coming from the European Commission. They explicitly say, explicitly, sorry, say that they are working towards trustworthy AI. So many work about it. We also, well, we can examine an example. So I talked about the work produced by the High Level Expert Group on artificial intelligence. They produced what we call the ALTA, so it's a self-assessment list for, what? Sorry, I put it in the good order. It's a list of self-assessment items for developers of AI. So basically, it's a list of questions, disseminated across seven big topics, they call them requirements, so human agency and autonomy, technical rebusnesses, and safety, etc. Here, for each item, as I said, there are questions to allow the developer to be able to understand to what extent the system is trustworthy. In another work, I mentioned the work produced by our EASI, it's EASA, the European Agency for Aviation Safety. Here, we can see on the right that we've got the seven big requirements from the ALTA, the same human agency and oversight, etc. But we can see that in this work, there are some other notions that are, in their opinion, relative to trustworthiness, notions relative to the characterization of the AI application, notion about safety, information security. From this extract, we can understand that there are many, many sources presenting the topic of trust with many, many key aspects, many keywords, many attributes, relative to trustworthiness. So the first remark that we can make is, it's a bit hard to understand what is trust. In fact, what is trustworthiness of AI? We've got many big and interesting and high-level works produced about that. But, well, they don't all agree on everything. So we understand that there's perhaps a notion of context for trust. If we want to understand to what extent we can assess the trustworthiness of a system, and what I mean with assessing is knowing if it's indeed trustworthy or not. We know that for certain attributes of trustworthiness, we know that there are scores, there are methods, there are protocols, so good practice in the development of AI. We know that, for example, for reliability, there are some indicators, some scores, that are well-known by the community. So things that we can count. There are also notions like accuracy. We know that accuracy can be related to the F-measure, the calculation, precision, recall, etc. Those are tools, tools to estimate, to assess the level of accuracy, reliability. I'm not saying that it's exhaustive, I wrote every time, etc., because depending on the cases, we know out of expert knowledge that sometimes some scores are better than others. But, well, it's quite clear, when we talk about accuracy, it's quite easy to understand what we must compute. But for, as I said, other attributes, but it's for many other attributes, it's not straightforward. The way we have to assess it, it's not really clear. Safety, we know that here, while it's not a matter of being clear or not, it's a matter of being difficult to do that. We know that, for example, safety, well, it's not enough, and it's obvious to ask, well, is the system safe or not? We know that it's many, many more factors relative to safety, to ensure the full safety of a system. Concerning auditability, it's an attribute that is offered in particular in the ALTA. And here, from what I remember, the only question that is asked is something like, well, is your system... Can your system be audited, auditable, audited, sorry, by a third party? Have you ensured that it is auditable? But here, if I'm a developer of AI, well, I don't know exactly based on what is required by the auditor, to what extent is it truly auditable? Well, I would need some more tools and methods and some more details, in fact, to be able to understand if it's really, really auditable. And on the side of the auditor as well, I don't know exactly, well, I don't have real guides to understand what are the checkpoints that I must do, that I must follow, to have to read some documentation about the system, to have to, I don't know, to have the whole corpus of training data. Well, I don't know exactly what I need to do, so as to perform an audit. We also hear a lot about biases, biases of AI. So ensuring that a system is free from biases is a real complicated thing to do. So naturally, ensuring that, well, the system is free from bias, it's not a yes or no question, it's not so easy. There are different types of biases, different types of unfairnesses that a system can produce. And we also need methods to be able to check whether it's free from bias or not. So for many attributes, we understand that there are some tools missing. I will say a little bit more about tools afterward. As I wrote in the previous slide, I said not fully defined yet. It's not that we don't understand the concept behind, we do understand the concept, but, well, on some of them, we don't all agree on what it means, depending on the person who is involved behind that. In our work, we consider two types of different person who would need, who would be interested in assessing trust. So in the first part, we've got the developer. The developer is required and will be required at some points to produce trustworthy AI. So this developer needs to understand clearly what is important when we talk about trustworthiness. So what are the key aspects, the main characteristics that must be, well, taken into account? And they must also have a way of ensuring that what they produce is trustworthy or not, based on this attribute.
Agnès, you have three minutes left.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'll go faster, thank you. So concerning the external inspector, the person who wants to have a look, who needs to have a look, for example, a supervision entity, they need to have a clear, full list of checkpoints. So trust, as we understood, is made of several attributes. We're not going to, well, start a new taxonomy of trustworthiness, as I said, there is a lot of work. So in confiance AI, we're going to leverage naturally what has been done, what is required by the AI Act, AI Act in particular. What will be really interesting for us will be to be able to design tools. When I said tools, it's checkpoints, methods, it's scores, etc. So these assessment tools will be, so either computation tools, when it's quantitative, when we want to calculate something, it can also be observations made by experts. As I said, we need methods, and we need, in some cases, we also need thresholds for each attribute. What is a pass or fail value or acceptable ranges? We want to focus as well on the whole AI lifecycle, so not only the final product, but every time during conception, during deployment, etc. And we want to ensure that everything will be taken into account, so all the AI lifecycle, but also the model, specific characteristics, the algorithm, the subsystems, but also all the ecosystem around the system. So the individuals, the constraints, the strategy, economic constraints as well. When I ask, can we measure trust, what is important? If we go back to the metrological definition of measurement, we're not doing proper measurement. We don't have a measurement unit, for example. So for the sake of rigor, we want to understand that trust, this is many aspects, they are naturally measurable. It's estimation, most of them are linked to subjective aspects. Sometimes they are a bit vague, ill-defined, too general. We must understand as well that trust, it's an aggregation of different factors. So we need to produce, in the end, a multi-criteria assessment, and to make sure that we leverage the good practice from metrology and also from experimental sciences. So the objective is doing an assessment of trust, not a measurement, it's not precise enough. The next steps of our work, so as you understood, it will be to define a trustworthiness score, a hierarchy of attributes, and also to be able to produce rules, methods, and scores for each of these attributes, to be able to compute, to assess them. And another part of the work will be to build a novel score of trustworthiness, to ensure that for a specific application, we've got, well, a topping score. We'll do some pilot testing on the use cases that Bertrand presented in terms of usability and relevance, it's my last slide, Bertrand, sorry. And, well, in terms of usability and relevance of the framework that we're going to try to develop. And also, we plan a transfer, so link with the standardization works. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So I encourage you to look at the chat, because if you can answer some questions on the chat, that will leave us more time for the discussions. And I know I'm asking Eric to take the floor for his talk about astronauts' cases. Eric?
Okay, can you hear me and can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, so...
You haven't shared your screen yet.
Okay. Is it better?
Yes, perfect, go on, thank you.
So my name is Eric Jen, I'm working at RIT, at Exuperrin, Toulouse, and involved in the confiance AI project on several aspects, in particular the one related to DNB. And I will give you today a very short overview of what we're currently doing on astronauts' cases and modeling in general. So we start by very general things. We are all concerned by one main property, that the system that we'll be working on, that the system that we'll be building worked as required and does not cause harm. And these properties, it's impossible to satisfy it in an absolute way. We rely, we have to provide some confidence that this system will behave as expected and does not cause harm. And we are back to this question of confidence. Confidence cannot be warranted, confidence is hardly measured, but we can do a certain number of things to provide sufficient elements to give confidence to someone, to the ability of the system to perform its function. And this is the exact definition of a dependable system. A dependable system is a system in which you can place a justified confidence on it. If we look at the definition of confidence, we find this very different, very large set of definitions, which are using some very fuzzy words, such as faith, beliefs, feeling. And this is something, it clearly shows that the concept is hard to define. Confidence in general, and especially confidence when you are talking about certification, relies on a certain number of various elements. There are facts, you have factual evidences, for example, the demonstration that your system is behaving as expected. You have the compliance to some consensual and well-defined shared body of rules, such as standards. You have the long-term experience on your system, you have also some particular relationship with your certification authorities. So there are a lot of elements that are involved in this relation of confidence. And this usually involves combinations of the different types of confidence that I just mentioned. But at the end of the day, what is really important is the justification of this confidence. You have to provide some justification, and these are these justifications that give someone confidence in your system. So how can we build this justification? As stated by John Rushby in one of his papers on astronauts' cases, he wrote that justification can be developed and documented as structured argument grounded on evidence. So the key here is this structured argument. And assurance cases in one means to build this kind of structural arguments. So what is an assurance case? An assurance case uses a certain number of huge set of concepts. There are several types of assurance cases, there are several types of notations. But basically, they're all relies on a very small corpus of concept. At the top level, the top concept is the concept of goal. A goal is a statement that some property holds, that your system is fair, the system complies with is real-time requirements and so forth. And according to a certain strategy, which is a second concept, you will decompose this goal into sub-goals. And you will do that repeatedly down to the point where your final goals, the leaves of your tree can be coupled to some factual evidence. So an assurance case is a structured argument which is auditable, which can be verified, can be reviewed. And this is, in my opinion, a very important way or very, can I say, efficient way to provide the confidence we're talking about. So basically, the assurance case is structured as a tree, as I mentioned, you have a goal, you subdivide this goal into several goals and so forth, so it's a tree. The question is, what is the relationship between assurance cases and AI? What am I talking about assurance cases, which is a very general concept? Well, I think that there is a very good opportunity to use assurance cases in the domain of AI development for several reasons. The first one is that there is, there are quite a lot of methods, of properties. We talk about expicability, about fairness, about yeah, sorry, I missed, there is a large list of properties. And these properties are rarely linked to a system-level objective. So the role, one of the role of the assurance cases is to relate these low-level properties to some high-level system-level property. So this is one, one point where we think that assurance cases can bring something to us. The second point, which is more generally, is that there is, there seems to be an opportunity to introduce this kind of techniques in a domain, especially in the analytics domain, for instance, where they are not used for the moment. Just because we have already well-established methods and we really don't really need something else. But when, when it comes to AI, things must be reinvented, the engineering practices must be reinvented. So there is a very good opportunity to introduce assurance keys at that point in time. When everything is currently being developed around, to ensure the good properties of AI systems. So the starting point is to formalize to some extent the engineering activities. So this is one activity that we're currently carrying out in Confiance AI. What we are doing is to model the activities of, the engineering activities around the development of AI systems. So what I mean by to model is to identify what are the activities, what are the items produced by these activities? And what are the expected properties for those items? Because you expect something from an activity to produce something which has a certain properties. So this work on the, on the, on the left hand is to formalize what are the current practices of, of the current engineering practices of AI development. And once you have built this model of the engineering process, you are ready to identify those goals, that's what I was talking about just before. You are ready to identify the strategies to comply with these goals. You are ready to identify the assumptions and the solutions to comply with these goals. So the first phase is to identify the items that are produced by the engineering activities. The second step is to identify the properties of these items. And to identify these properties, you can rely on, on the classical dependability analysis activities such as identifying what are the hazards, identify what are the risks. What is, so the risk is a probability of something going wrong along with the effect of this error on the, on the, on the system at the end. So we need these two sites, this two-pronged modeling approach to go on. Currently, we are, so we are, we are doing what we, what I've just described. We have identified and worked on certain number of high-level properties such as robustness. That was the property I was thinking before and didn't find the word. And other properties such as compliance with the, with the performance requirements, performance both in terms of functional performance, but also in terms of temporal performance. So we are, we are building this assurance case for a certain number of high-level properties. And this, at the end of the day, what we will obtain is this kind of tree where we have the goals displayed. We have the strategy which explains how you decompose a goal in sub-goals. And you assess that this decomposition is correct. And at the leaves of the tree, you have the solutions, that is to say, the ways by means of which you will provide the evidences showing that the goal is actually achieved. So if we have a look to, to the details of this kind of activity. We'll see the, this kind of representation of the various goals, sub-goals, strategies in textual form. And at the end of the tree, at the low hand of the tree, you have the means by means of which you will demonstrate that the goal achieved. It is the ways to obtain these evidences. And so here, we will, we organize to some extent the different method that I was talking about at the beginning. There are a lot of methods to ensure robustness, for instance, so we rely these methods to high-level goals. Once you have done that, you have identified your method, you know to which goal this method is related. And you can now augment your engineering process with the VNP activities related to these methods. For instance, if you want to, to use the adversarial logit pairing method. This will lead to a new activity which will be placed within the original, the initial workflow. So you have this initial workflow where no VNP activity are shown. And then you augment it with the VNP activities and you're, you know why you are doing that, you are doing this activity to achieve a certain goal. So the loop is closed. You started from the modeling of the process of the workflow. You went to the description of the argumentation and you go back to the, to the process. So for sure, there is not only one strategy, there are many different strategies. Just because the risks you are considering is not the same from one domain to another. Because also you do not want, you have certain experience, you, you are already doing some activities, you don't want to change them, you are already doing some DNB. You have done some, some choices in the methods that you are currently using, so you don't want to change it. So there are a lot of strategies and each strategy can be compared to another by, by means of certain number of attributes. Such as the cost of the method, the increase of trustworthiness brought by the method. Sometimes you don't want a certain method, such as don't want to use formal method because it's too heavy or you do not, you do not have the skills to do that. So you have a certain number of attributes that will help you choosing the appropriate strategy. So you have basically N strategies related to the different attributes that I just mentioned. And each strategy leads to a certain number of solutions, so a certain number of activities to be put in your, in your workflow. So relying on the, on the attribute that I mentioned. Here, I give the example of the applicability of the method, of the limitations of the method. And here you have an extract of our current work on, which displays the Raluplex method, more or less a formal method. So it has a certain number of limitations and certain domain of applicability. So based on this kind of information, you choose your VNP strategy. So at the end of the day, what we plan to do, because it's still a work in progress. Is to provide an environment which will be part of the Confiance AI environment where you'll have the workflow on the one hand. The workflow here, the workflow here with the engineering items that is produced. You will have the assurance case with the different representation of it. Which relates the property associated to an engineering item to a certain goal and to the ways to ensure that this goal is achieved. And you will have a means to select a strategy according to the different metrics or characteristics or attributes that I mentioned before. Such as the cost, the confidence, the applicability and so forth. And this will end up in a, in a, in a, in a kind of tool provided to the, to the, to the end user. And ideally, probably in perfect world, we will be able to produce some kind of VNP plan from all these modeling elements. On the basis of the strategy that will be chosen by the, by the end user. So this is a work in progress. Currently, we are doing the systematic modeling of engineering activities. And the activities on one hand, the workflow based on these activities on the other hand. We are also trying to build in a systematic way the assurance case related coupled with this workflow. And we are also doing a kind of demonstrator of the two, the two that I briefly described in the previous slide. In the future, this is something that we plan to achieve by the end of the program. Is to have this kind of automation of the activities on the basis of the workflow and the strategies that I mentioned. So basically, the idea is to, for what can be performed by tools is to automate the execution of the tools and in relation to a certain VNP strategy. So it's kind of automation of the justification that is modeled and represented by an assurance case. And that's it.
Thank you, Eric, thank you very much. As I said, we have a period for discussion after the next presentation. And there's also an ongoing, interesting discussion on the, on the chat. So put your other questions on the chat and we will discuss them later. For the moment, we switch to Flora, Flora is online, I see her, to talk about trusting the data. Flora, yeah.
Okay, hello everyone. So I guess you will see my screen, so yes, as Bertrand said, I'm going to talk to you about data. And I will present you some challenges we've, we've seen if we want to increase confidence in the data lifecycle of critical systems. So let's start with a cliche catchphrase, so data is a new world. So indeed, you may all know, so data is really necessary to power AI-based system. But if we follow the analogy, like you're not going to put any type of fuel in your car, you're not going to put any type of data in your AI system. Indeed, you need data of quality. So by quality, we mean data that is relevant to your use case. But also data that is adequate in order to reach high performance of your AI system. And this is particularly true for AI-based critical systems that has a high level of safety required. For example, if we take the example of a component, component to detect a pedestrian for driving assistance. If you want to detect pedestrians at day and night, you can't just use a lot of images of pedestrians during the day. And use just like a hundred images of pedestrian at night, you will need to have a lot of data from day and night. So this is an example of needing data sets of good quality. And also you need to trust your data set so in order to be relevant to use case. But also, we can't use directly raw data to train your system. Your data needs to go through several steps from collection to selection and the processing of your data like oil. In order to have refined data set that will be suitable to train your system. So that's what we want to highlight, to have data to power your systems. You need to have trustworthy data set, but you need to also have a reliable data pipeline. That would be helpful to process large volumes of data. Stopping the analogy now, if we look at data in the lifecycle of an AI component. You will have the first steps of data, so for the pool, ready to data, for call acquisition, labeling. Then you have other steps related more to the model, the training, embedded, etc. So if you look at this lifecycle, it doesn't answer us to some questions we will have. Especially which data should I use to train my system? Can I trust the data that I require? How can I process large volumes of data, but also is my data adequate? So, starting from these challenges in Confiance AI. We want to tackle the data lifecycle and to, to add some new inputs to this data lifecycle. So in one hand, we have the real world and the synthetic world, which are places when we will acquire data. We also, we can acquire data through sensors. But also the synthetic world that we see is really important in order to acquire data through simulation. Data that will be ideally perfect since you will have directly the proper labeling without any error of labeling. But also since you can simulate any type of data you want. You can create some data that won't have the bias that we see in the, in the real world. Indeed, if I go back to my example of detecting pedestrian. You don't have as many as pedestrian during the night than during the day in, in the real world. And so that will be complicated to acquire a lot of data with pedestrian at night. And you won't have this issue if you look at the synthetic world where you can create all the situation you want. So for our data lifecycle, we have in one hand, so the real is a synthetic world where we can acquire all data. But we want to emphasize that it's not sufficient, we need to put in parallel the operational domain. Meaning the requirements of, from our system point of view to develop our component. So for requirements, it's basically a list of, of conditions that we want our system to conditions that our system we, we, we see, but also condition that our system will tackle. So for example, if we go back to my example. The operational domain will for example list all the meteorological conditions. So for example, sunny, sun glare, rain, wind, etc. But also the type of, of objects that, that we will encounter, so pedestrian of different size, etc. And so we see that, we think that it's really important to have this, this two things in parallel. And so what we want to do in Confiance AI is really to develop an ensemble of methods and tools. That will be helpful to design and analyze trusted data sets. And in the end, we want to, so have trustworthy and relevant data sets to our use case. But associated with metrics that will be helpful to ensure data quality and domain coverage. So how we want to do that? So here is our roadmap. What we really want to do is to do the articulation with the operational domain, so the requirements from the system point of view. But the real world where we're going to acquire data set and the synthetic world. So a big important activity for that, a central activity is about how can we specify and track operational domain coverage in our data sets. So meaning, how can we explicit the requirements? And so this, we will start with work done with system engineer. But based on that, how can we look in our data sets that we cover well our operational domain? So parallel activities will be then, how can we analyze, prepare and select data in the real world? With regards to operational domain. So with that, we want to compute Uh, so with that, we want to, to compute, uh, to use techniques uh, like active learning, for example, that would be helpful to select in a lot of raw data sets. Uh, the important data, the relevant data to our use case. And in the next step, uh, how can we tackle, uh, the, the lifecycle of a component? So how can we integrate new data with using, for example, techniques of incremental learning? But also how can we adapt, um, our component from one situation to another situation? Uh, so by using techniques of domain adaptation, um, it can also be used to tackle a situation where we don't have a lot of data. So for example, if I, I still take this example of detecting pedestrian at night. Uh, if we have, uh, a lot of images during the day, uh, can we use domain adaptation techniques to increase the performance of our model during the night? Um, in parallel, uh, we want also to look at how can we generate an augment uh, or data sets with simulation, um, and uh, definitely with regards to our operational domain. Uh, but this comes with another question. How can we ensure the representativity of simulated data? How can we be sure that the simulated data is coherent with, um, real data? And finally, we want to make the bridge between those two words. Um, and, um, how can we use the synthetic words to achieve completion of our real world? So it means, uh, how can we use the synthetic world to acquire data that will represent the corner cases? Uh, so we can take the example of having a pedestrian at night with an umbrella. Uh, how can we maybe simulate this data to fill the gap of our real world data sets? Um, so we started to work on these activities in twenty twenty one in confiance dot AI. Uh, we've looked at several challenges yet, um, especially the one about how to select appropriate data and how can we do adaptation to new domains? And you will have some first outcomes on the selection of data uh, at a presentation later done by Fritz with the techniques of active learning. Um, so to finish, uh, what we really want to do in conference dot AI is have this circle and iterative way to process. We want to develop methods to address these changes, but also to apply and evaluate and is true in on industrial use cases. Uh, and to, to, to develop tools that will apply these methods on a large scale. Um, thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Flora. Thank you very much. Uh, there, we, we spend, we have a few minutes for discussions. Uh, there has been a, there has been an active discussion on Anissa's presentation, but more or less, I think they agreed on the chat. So I better go to the discussion on astronauts case. Because there are the, uh, uh, interesting discussions between, I don't know how to say your name, Debo, Stibels and Jane Finn. So can you please summarize your, your, your point of view? Or you, you can speak, I think that would be the best. And Eric and Mario, Mario, so he's online. Eric and Mario can answer. Hello?
Uh, hi.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. So basically, uh, I was asking Joan about, um, building assurance cases, uh, it's a more, uh, it's one of the successful ways of certifying robustness. Um, and tooling is something which is missing. And I think that was something I was saying that the tooling, especially for machine learning tool was missing. And the one of the problem which I was facing was about completeness, you know? So we say that, okay, uh, we want the system to be robust. And then we create an argument saying that by adding something uh, that, okay, maybe with accuracy or uncertainty estimation because of this, the system becomes more, uh, is, is robust. So how, how do we measure that it is a complete argument, right? So is it possible or is there any?
Uh, there, there is no definite answer, actually. Uh, the, the essence case is, is not a mathematical proof. It's just a way to, to show that you have asked yourself the, the appropriate questions that you have ask yourself whether the, the property is complete or, or not. And it does not give you so many keys on how to achieve this, this, uh, this, uh, completeness. So don't be, uh, I don't want to be misunderstood. Uh, it's really a way to organize, uh, uh, an argumentation to make it explicit rather than implicit to make, to make it, uh, auditable. And but there is no fundamentally, there is no mathematical background behind it. It looks like a mathematical proof, but it's not a mathematical proof. So it's up to you to, to achieve, to demonstrate that you are actually complete. Uh, and this is not really covered by the essence case per se.
Jane, would you like to add something to the debate?
Yes, certainly can do. So, um, uh, I, I'm used to using assurance cases for safety certification for aircraft. So, um, there, at, at the moment where we do assurance cases that, that are signed off and, and then they are static. I obviously something I appreciate, we're going to need to do something in the future about those changing more quickly. So, um, at the moment, it is very true that, that, um, it is the human that needs to make that evaluation of whether your argument is sufficiently complete.
Yeah.
The assurance case guidance that, that we have issued talks about use of assurance claim points that, that said, you can make a separate side, side argument about why you believe your argument is complete. So you can make that, that, that separately to actually the main leg of the argument. So there are mechanisms in the standard and the guidance about it. I, I accept that the tooling is, is a long way behind. Um, I know Ganesh is talking this afternoon, um, about, um, uh, safe, um, ML certification in the aerospace domain. And at NASA, they've produced a tool that, that, um, is probably the most advanced I've seen in, in terms of being able to support assurance cases. So I think the mechanisms are there, but in, in reality, at the moment, it's completely a human evaluation. And certainly, things I want to do in the future about, um, real time evaluation of safety cases that, um, we will need to put some kind of encoding into the assurance cases so that they can be automatically evaluated. But certainly at the moment, we, we don't have that mechanism. And certainly, it, we wouldn't expect to encode that, that criteria. Um, you know, for, for every single case, it, it will be a context sensitive evaluation. So you'll have to put in that evaluation criteria as part of your, um, assurance argument. It won't be something that's given to you and you have to fill in the boxes. It will be something that you will have to create the argument for anyway.
Just going on.
Eric, can you come on?
No, 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 no comment. I was listening carefully.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Just, I, I'm asking Roll if you think that your exchange with, uh, Agnes was enough on the chat or if you want to say a little more?
Uh, well, it was definitely a productive exchange. Um, yeah, I don't know if you were part of the discussion this morning, but I, I surfaced a number of lessons from the system safety discipline. I think Jane is also a system safety expert who just responded and pointed out the contextual, uh, the importance of context and situated complexity. So I think, yeah, the, the, the lessons that I hope people take into account is like, take into account this, um, in, in, in how you structure, you know, your, your platforms, your tooling, uh, taking into account the situatedness, uh, really avoid speaking only to the complying, the AI act, I think that would be really, uh, a misinvestment. Of course, the AI regulation will go into a good direction, but I think we shouldn't follow it as engineers, we should lead. We should show where it should go. So I think that's a extremely important lesson. I hope, I hope that for you, you see that you are leader, leading this, not, not the, the people in Brussels. Um, and then the other point that we discussed was the different stakeholders. So I want to resurface that once, once more. We know from decades of dealing with uh, building, um, different levels of software-based automation that there are natural ways in which the operator will use a system differently than what was intended in design. And oftentimes, it's because the operator knows how to safely operate a system and sometimes it's not. So if we only focus on the developer and the auditor, we're really working on, I think, a compliance mechanism and not on like a meaningful addressing the kind of complexities also between stakeholders. And here I, I, we talk about operator and, and um, and developer, but in, in, in many cases, these systems are interacting with citizens with all, all, all kinds of people, stakeholders, right? So I think we, we also need to take these lessons from system safety about how to allow what's called aligning mental models. So how do different people think about safety and how to use a system? And how does that, um, differ? And how do we actually align these mental models? We need to think about that in a, in a broader sense with different kinds of stakeholders, uh, to take them into the loop and to make sure that when these kinds of tooling, this kinds of tooling is used, that it actually empowers the stakeholders that, you know, may eventually also bear the brunt of the, the risks that are associated with, uh, with these systems.
Thank you, Roll. I think we should have a further, further discussion. It's time to move to the series of three additional presentation that we have. And I hope that we, we get, we get going with the discussion online. And I think that we should too, should also find some ways to go on with the discussion later on by email or whatever. So yes, Fritz, Thomas, I think the floor is yours for giving concrete examples of what Flora was telling just before we had this question break. Fritz, please go on. We can't, we cannot hear you.
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
Yes, very good.
Okay. So, hi, everybody. And Fritz spoke to come and I will present the first book, uh, passing the project of data lifecycle for confiance AI, which is building a better data set for real world task with active learning. So I'm presenting on behalf of the team working on efficient integration data set construction. So what's the problem? Still today, we have an exponential growth of available data. So you, you can see that we have more and more data which are available. And this is a good news for deep learning, which needs a lot of data and having those data help depending to have good success in during the recent years. But the problem that we face is the labization. So we have a lot of data and it's not realistic to label all those data, for example, to label. Imagine it took some, it took two years for, for labeling one million images. So what's the solution? We propose it's active learning. And active learning is a way to iteratively label the data. And to do it first, we can label a relatively small initial subset. So you begin by labeling a small subset and you train your model with this small subset. And next you select another relevance more subset to label. So you use the model to select in the own label set, a small set of, um, data which should be interesting for, for the model to, to label. You add it to the initial subset and you will train your order. And finally, you iterate this process until you reach the global level budget that you have. So you learn, you learn more, you add the, you add data, you return the model and you do it, uh, uh, over active learning cycles. So now I'm going to present the acquisition function. So what the acquisition function? The function that we use to select data that we want it to add to your level set. And to do that, you use a level set and the model that you train at a certain cycle. For example, you can use a method that uses uncertainty of the model. And for that, you, you will take the, the number data that you will, uh, pass an inference to, to your model, which is trending at the cycle. And then you have a probability distribution for each sample. And for uncertainty, we use the metric, the entropy. And the entropy helps to measure the uncertainty for that sample with this formula here. And then the model will select, so the acquisition function aims to select the most uncertain level, the most uncertain samples that you will be able to add, uh, to your level set for the next cycle. Another way, uh, that to save the data is to enforce the diversity of the data. So you still use your, your level sets and you use representations coming from the backbone of the model that you train. And these embeddings helps you to compute distance between, uh, uh, between some, the different sample. And for example, the concept approach aims to, to, um, save data such that the level data, the level said that you have uh, the next cycle, each sample in that level set and, um, and, uh, the, uh, this goes sample in the level set should be, uh, June. So you minimize this distance and this help to have a diverse, uh, data set. Now I'm going to present the result and, uh, of the, of the experiment that we did. So, uh, so we did the active learning on reward tasks. And, uh, in the literature of active learning, it was done on classification and detection. So on easy, uh, easy text and easy, um, simple, simple data set like MNIST, for example. But in this case, as confiance, uh, AI, we want to deal with reward ties for industrial needs. So we are going to use, uh, the, the data set, BDD one hundred K as, uh, as a proxy of reward scenario. So this is very good because it has a lot of instances uh, has been collected on the different weather congestion. And it's a very good data set to, 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 as a proxy of reward scenario. So the setup that we use for this autonomous driving application. So it's a data set one hundred, BDD one hundred K, as I said. Uh, the task is object detection. And the model that we use is U V five, which is rich to train and it's interesting in industrial applications. The active learning configuration is, um, using a global budget of ten percent of the data set. So to do the, we, to do it, we use, uh, at each cycle, a budget of one percent of the data set, which is seven hundred image. And we do, do ten cycle to, to have this ten percent of the data set plus seven thousand images. So how do, do we compute, uh, how do, how do we compute the uncertainty for, for an image? So we use the, the, and we use the, the entropy. And for an image, for example, we take that image and we pass it through the model train. And you have, uh, different predictions here, uh, in the, in those, in all those boxes. And we compute entropy. So you have a distribution for each box. And you compute the entropy of each box. And what we can use is, uh, using this and tools to, to represent the entropy of the, of the image. We use either the maximum of, uh, the different trupes or the mean of this entropy. So test both of them and see the different results. And for curse it, we are, we're going to use the, the image, use the embedding that comes from the backbone of the model. And then, uh, perform the concept algorithm, which aims to, to select diverse, the set here, diverse samples. So the, the result that we have here, so we, we perform the, the active learning with the configuration that I, that I said before. And we have here ten cycle which we run. And so we have better and better results when you select seven hundred image through this ten seconds. This is the result for the random selection. So you, you select seven hundred image at, after each cycle randomly. When you, when you select with the intersect approach, you have a better result here, which is a good news. And after when you use the maximum uncertainty or the minus thirty, so you have a very good result here. So beginning, uh, the second cycle here, you have a huge gap here. And this is a very good result. So, uh, for, so we can see that, uh, active learning is, uh, is good for, so it works better than random selection for object detection on the reward scenario here. Another remark that we have is that, uh, pretending is very helpful for, for this active learning situation. So the, the previous result was. So the the previous result was a model trained with. Uh, the model was trained with on Coco. So pretending on the similar text is very interesting, as you can see here for car set. So we have here the results of the course that when is when the model is not pre-trained. I can see that the car set is not really better than than random. And when you have the proper training here, the process is performing better. So this can be explained by the fact that the representation that we use. Uh, very good when you're when you're using a model which is pretend. But when you begin with a model which is not pretend, you don't have good presentation that will be used for the concept algorithm. So next we can see the result for each classes here. So you have, we you don't have similar similar performance for for each classes. For example, for the class car here, you don't have an improvement for when you use active learning than than random. But you have a good performance for motorcycle or bicycle class here. So with Microsoft identity, you have a huge gap. And we can also see here when we we have the the gap with the the random. Uh, vs the the random and the maximum twenty with the number with the trend, uh, number of instance in the trend set. You can see that active learning and especially maximum certainty selection perform really good for classes. Which are not very, which are not, which are very few in the in the list. Although when you you, when you have more, so when the more you have instances, that is it. The activity analysis is less useful for for improving the performance. So activity is very good that selecting at selecting images when you have. Uh, when you have classes that have few instances in the set. And this is kind of logical, because the maximum is the determination, you select. We set the image when on which you have classes where the the result weren't very good. And when you have less instances, so the the pre-training at at the certain cycle for the for that. For the for the result for for that test, we will less good than with worse than the the class. Where we have a lot of instance and then you select more and more image for for those classes. And this result with with this good performance of the maximum intensity section. So to conclude, active learning is is better than random station for real world testing. It's for real world and test and especially for object detection on B A D one hundred K. Uh, pretending is pretending on similar level to the set as Coco. Uh, helps with the with good presentation, which is important for car sets to enforce the diversity of. Of the data set when you when you perform active learning with that approach. And active learning was proved invaluable to to select. To to have a good performance for detection with presence that already present in the data set. Uh, this is the end of the presentation and.
Thank you. Thank you, Fritz. Thank you very much. As a motorcyclist myself, I'm very pleased to see your last result. Uh, but now it's time to switch to Paul. Paul will talk us talk to us about randomized smoothing.
Hello.
Hello. Yeah. You can, the floor is yours for Paul for ten minutes.
Can you see my screen?
Uh, put it in presentation mode, but yes.
Yes, of course. Okay. Uh, here. Okay.
Uh. Very good. You can go.
I know. Okay, hi, everyone. I'm going to talk about randomized smoothing and especially about our contribution to randomized smoothing. Do you hear me?
Quite well, quite well. Go on.
Okay, okay. This is a joint work with Mark Arnaudon from the Mathematical Institute of Bordeaux. And with Artem Jari from IRT SystemX. So as everyone knows, today neural nets are not robust. Uh, Zvagadi et al. showed that they are sensitive to invisible perturbation called adversarial examples. Here you have an illustration of an adversarial example. So on the left, the classifier tells you it's a pig. And after the perturbation, it tells you that it's an airliner. So to make your neural net robust, you have several methods. So you have typically two families. Empirical defense only tell you if a specific attack is successful. It doesn't provide you guarantees. The state of the art empirical defense is adversarial training. On the other hand, you have a certified defense. It aim to provide provide a guarantee in a specific neighborhood. That it doesn't exist an adversarial example. So you have milk methods and formal methods. The the problem with this method is that it assumes specific network architecture. That's why Le Cuir et al. and Coen et al. developed randomized smoothing. A new technique based on probability with no assumption on the network architecture. So given a soft classifier, F, your neural net, taking, for example, image from R D two. And returning probability class. You construct from this classifier, a new one called a smooth classifier. And given by this formula, G of F. So on the bottom, you have an illustration of the randomized smoothing technique. So if you increase the magnitude of sigma, you will get different probability P of A and P of B. P of A is the top class and P of B is the runner up class. So this new classifier, J, uh, is a certifiable L two robustness. Coen et al. shows this this theorem. Um. So if you change sigma, your points will enjoy a new certified radius R. That's why Alpha Raitel proposes a data dependent method. So the idea is, as I said, the randomized smoothing fixes sigma and X, then finds R. Depending on X and and sigma. So data dependent, the data dependent method only fixes X and then optimizes to find sigma star of X. Which is the arc max of the certified radius. So on the left, you have the the fixed method and on the right, the data dependent ones. So for example, for X one, you can easily see that you can increase sigma to get a larger region. And however, for for example, for X three. You will decrease sigma to get to certify your your points correctly. So now you you can quickly see that is a isotropic distribution. It's just giving you an idea of worst case region. In order to improve this, Eras et al. propose an isotropic diagonal certification method. Now you can solve for sigma diagonal matrix, so they solve this maximum. Maximum maximization problem with sigma diagonal matrix. So now the certified region by Anser are ellipsoids containing the balls obtained by randomized smoothing. Uh, but the axis obtained are parallel to the canonical ones. So V one and V two are the canonical practice. So the motivation of our contribution is based on smoothing by diagonal noise is not optimal and not invariant under rotation. Here you have a two class classification problem. The green circle is certified region obtained by the isotropic data dependent method and the Anser method. You can easily see that Anser doesn't improve the isotropic method because it doesn't rotate the the ellipse. That's why we propose to use information geometry. We solve the maximization problem on the SPD manifold, so SPD for semi-positive definite. We use the Ralph Fisher metric and the GeoMstat library. So on the left, you have just an illustration on a three class classification problem on R two. We set the usual parameters used for the randomized smoothing. And the same number of iteration for the Anser methods and our method. So as you can see, our method, uh, leads to better results. So the usual graph to study or compare randomized techniques is this kind of graph. You put the evolution of the certification precision as a function of the radius. Like before, our technique lead on better certified agents. So this is just preliminary results. You will, we will publish soon a paper on archive. So thank you for your attention, attention.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you very much. And now it's time to look at the last paper of the session. And I'm asking Mark. Nabon, Mark, okay, Mark is online. Uh, Mark will talk about a use case that I did not introduce in the beginning. Which is the customer's demand forecasting from Air Liquide. So Mark, you have ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, your sound, okay, your sound is good now.
Yes, I'm glad. So thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Mark Nabon. I'm gonna talk to you about uncertainty quantification for customer demand forecasting. Which was not possible without the help of contributors from SystemX and Centex Zippery and the goal of this consortium, Confiance AI. So to begin, I'm gonna start by explaining and presenting the early key use case about customer demand forecasting. Uh, for the context, the goal here is to predict to predict the future trends of customer demands as precisely as possible. Uh, which can be very high, high, useful for the production side. So what I call, when you see from the table here, we have to make decisions. Uh, and to predict what could be the pro the the product that we want to load. The customers in order to know what products we have to produce from the sources. And this deviation, the sourcing can have a lot of uncertainties and a lot of. Effe- effects on the on all the supply chain. So we have, we are able to extract certain data and information, which are multi varied time series. Uh, related to the historical consumption, geographical distribution, customers' orders, contextual data and systemality. And, um, starting from this data set, we are able to help. The person that are distributing the resources. Uh, to be able to have a certain prediction and a form of the extra boost regusher. And to be able to predict for the following week, what could be the quantities of product that the clients, the customers would 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 want. But when we compare the technical estimation provided by the operators on site and the forecast estimation. We can see that there is an uncertainty that is present. And this uncertainty can lead to lack of trust in the the tool. And it can lead to energy costs, because if we produce more, we will have. Product losses, because we can't store everything and we are talking about gases and liquids. And if we produce less, we have the risk of drying the clients and it's it's not very optimal. So the idea is objective is to build prediction intervals that are able to quantify the uncertainty in the forecast. And we want high guarantee to be able to have something that can be industrialized in production and be useful to the on-site operators. Uh, to begin, what is the uncertainty? A quick definition. There are, in the machine learning process, it can be reduced to two main types. We have the aleatoric uncertainty, which is an uncertainty that is irreducible. It is linked to the intrinsic randomness of the phenomenon being modeled, like for example, the coin flipping. And the epistemic uncertainty, which is reducible if you, for example, have more data, more knowledge and a more efficient model, for example. Here we are not, we were not, we don't, we don't want to distinguish the two sources of uncertainty, but rather to. Uh, try to quantify the uncertainty in a more broad sense. So in this work package, we have the early key use case and with contributors and in the consortium. We want to first explore uncertainty quantification methods that are able to build what are what is called the prediction interval. That will quantify the uncertainty and encircle the forecast. Uh, we will explore the evaluation and metrics such as the, what is the coverage of the prediction interval? What is the size of the prediction interval to evaluate the performance of these methods? And furthermore, what is rather novel here is that we will, we will use what is called conformer prediction methods. On top of the alternative quantification methods. Uh, to give this high guarantee that we are promising the on-site operators. So due to, to be able to cover the ten minutes, I'm gonna back the quantum regression rather fast to give an example of how we can help prediction intervals. So a quick definition, it is a standard way to build different prediction intervals. Uh, we aim at prediction predicting the conditional quantiles. In contrast to the single value regression that estimates the conditional means such as the traditional forecast. So the definition is that, uh, we have, we want to predict. Uh, given a random variable Y and the value P, the associate quantity Q is such as the probability of Y, the last angle of Q, it would be P. So for example, the median is the fiftieth quantile. And if we take, for example, boosting algorithms such as gradient boosting. Uh, we can transform them into quantile regressors using the quantile loss. Uh, to give a visual representation, for example, in this in this slide. We can see that what we are predicting here is the quantile zero point seven, which is the red line. And how would, how can we interpret such plot? Is that the probability that the actual samples, the observations are less or equal than the predicted values, which is the red line, is seventy percent? So we're predicting a quantile and not a conditionally. And how can we use the quantum regression to build prediction intervals? Well, the idea is to combine two quantum regressors. Uh, for example, if you want a prediction interval of ninety percent. Uh, we build a fit quantum regressor at five percent and another twenty five percent. The five percent would be the lower boundary, the ninety five percent would be the upper boundary. And knowing that the probability that X will be between the two is the is the difference between the two probabilities. It just means the prediction interval will contain approximately ninety percent of samples. And the generic formula will be that our our prediction interval consists of two quantile regressors. And we'll define an alpha, which is a miscoverage level, which is in in this case ten percent. Which is the level of error that we will respect and to to have, for example, a ninety percent. A coverage for this prediction interval. Next, how can we evaluate that this method is is efficient? We have to rely on two separate metrics. We can't, we can't, we can't take normal and standard regression metrics. So first, we're gonna see coverage metrics or reliability metrics. And more specifically, the ACE, the average coverage error, which is the difference between two parameters. The first is the PICP, which is very simply the number of times our prediction is in fact in the prediction interval. And the second is the P I N C, which is the target coverage that we want, which is in our case ninety percent. So the difference will have, will be the average coverage error to see if the prediction interval was able to attain the target. the target coverage that we wanted in the first place. And if this metric is good enough, then we will, we will, we have to evaluate the sharpness metric. For, because I can, I can very clearly have a very big prediction interval that will cover all the plot. But this is not our intention here. We want very, we're very good coverage. But at the same time, we want prediction intervals that are the shortest possible, the narrowest possible. So we have to look at the P I size in this case. And the very standard metric is the P now, which is the prediction interval normalized average width. And we, there are a lot of other sharpness metrics such as interval score to evaluate all the, the points that are far from the interval. But right now, in this presentation, we're gonna focus on the A C and the P now. And if we, for example, if we take the crutch in boosting and we convert it to a quantile regressor, we will have this first result, like what we achieved in the work package. And we see that our I C is at fourteen point one percent, which is not good enough metric. And after evaluating several alternative quantification methods, we can see that the performance are not optimal. And because it is also a growing boosting and a standard regressor, we, we, we have another need to calibrate the intervals and have this high guarantee that we promised the operators. And so the solution was to discover the conformer prediction methods, which are methods that are distribution free, that are model agnostic, which mean that can be applied on top of any regression algorithm. And they are backed by theoretical guarantees to achieve the one minus alpha coverage level that we wanted. I'm gonna, I'm not gonna dive into details, but the, here, the, the thing, the, the main idea in how to use this is that CP or confirmal prediction can be used as a layer. It can be used either on a mean based regressor. For example, if you have already, I mean, basically, such as the forecast, it can adjust, it can compute a prediction interval by calculating an error margin, which is derived from empirical quantile known as non-conformity scores. And if we have already a quantile based regressor, then if we have already an interval that, that has been built, the error margin here will adjust the interval in order to optimize the performances. What is also essential here to say, to, to see is that in order to do confirm prediction, we have to have a held, held out calibration data. It's a bit typical, it's similar to train validation and best standard way. We have also a lot of methods to do so. We can either have a split data scheme. But here, it is the simplest and cheapest way, but we're gonna lose data, of course. And you have the K fold in various forms. Of course, we're gonna, are able to use, for example, more data. But of course, it will be more computationally expensive. So these, these two slides is, is to say that there are various methods in using CP. And this is why we had a benchmark doing in this, going in this work, workflow. And to give an idea of the, of what, of how the performances can be optimized. For example, here, when we conformalize the same gradient boosting quantile regressor, we pass from fourteen point, fourteen percent as I C to eight percent and in one goal. Those are the first tests. But we see that the sharpness metric, which was, which was at zero point five, was a little bit increased to zero point seven. So we, we lost a little bit in, in average interval size. But we gained a lot in, in coverage. And this is the main compromise that we will face here in this typical, this typical workflow. And which can be better visualized in this last slide, where we give an example of how we are benchmarking. So we see that we have a lot of uncertainty quantification methods, so quantile regressors, various estimation and so on. And we have a lot of methods of calculating the conformer prediction residuals and error margins. And how we can split the data scan. So we see we have a lot of methods. And we visualize them by looking at the two metrics at the same time to see what will be the best approach for a typical use case. And I, I just want to add that all of this work that we've done here, it wasn't, there, there's no actual, actual state of the art open source package. So it was mostly all developed and implemented within Confiance AI. And this is why it is very, we can see the goal of this consortium here is that we were able to gather our knowledge and implement something that is useful and that is hopefully will be implemented back in early kid and have promising results. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mark. I was telling that we can have a few minutes for discussions, but I have not seen any hand raised. And I have not seen any questions in the chat. So I'm just giving you a last chance to ask a question or give a comment. But I assume that, yeah, we are already seven minutes late and it's time to, for lunch for many of us. So maybe that's why there are no questions. So, yeah. I don't see any questions coming. So thank you for listening to the set of presentations by Confiance. For sure, there will be more confiance dot A I talks in the future. So there will be more opportunities to look at all the developments and advances of the program in different conferences, events, etc. So with this, I think we, I don't see any, any questions. So I, I'm giving the floor back to Gabriel.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all these presentations. Very interesting topic and subject. Thank you all, all the participants to, from Confiance A I. Now we're gonna have lunch. So we will resume at fourteen U T C.